No, it was.
Yeah, I like.
Okay, well, it's six o'clock, so we'll call the order, our planning commission meeting for February twenty seventh of two thousand twenty four. Commissioner Pelt, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, we'll jump right in. I didn't see an actual agenda, just the items in there, so we'll just kind of play it by ear. But mostly, we're here to have a discussion on the parking related to I A D U's, which is the ancillary dwellings, but internal to the building. So not like a detached A D U, but just part of it there. Steve, I think most of it's.
Most of it's me.
Presentation's you, and then we can have some discussion here.
Okay, so your packet was big. I apologize, but I wanted to give you at least an idea of what the discussions that the council had, what we talked about last time. I know you guys had asked me to come up with some examples. I don't know if I did everything that you wanted, but we will kind of take it from there. There we go. Still saying, check my devices.
Sometimes you just need to unplug and replug it back in.
That was scary.
That works.
You awake yet over there?
I am now.
Okay, so just kind of wanted to go through. So the mayor had given us a white paper, kind of go through it. I mean, he's had this discussion a few times as a council. Most of us go over to Senate Bill one seventy four. Now, that bill was large. It covered three large topics, the first being modern income housing. That was more of the report, which we didn't have to worry about because we do the report. And then it talked about the subdivision ordinance and requirements that we needed to go through, so we've already done that. And the last little bit is about I A D U's. So this first part that the mayor's kind of pointed out is, in that Senate bill, it stated that you can, cities must allow the conversion of a garage that has a common wall to be converted to an I A D U. I guess some people was asked that and cities would say no. So part of the thing that we're looking at is adding in language. Now, sitting down with our attorney, he says, because if you, if you came in today with all of your single family homes and you said, hey, I want to convert my garage into living space, there's nothing in the ordinance that says you can't. You can convert your two-car garage into living space. The only caveat is that legal parking area now must be provided elsewhere on the property, not in the setbacks, front or side. So it has to be a detached garage in the back or space in the back. Because a single-family home doesn't have to be covered. So that's kind of how we approach it now. So if you wanted to convert your garage into your teenager's.
Man cave.
Man cave or video game, you can. Just take that two-car park and put it somewhere else. Someone was talking with our attorney, he'd apply it the same as an I A D U. So if you want to take that two-car garage converted into another accessory dwelling unit, nothing says you can't do that, just got to provide that parking elsewhere. So we've come, we're not going to replace anything or make any comments because nothing in our ordinance precludes you from doing it now. So as long as we're consistent with the way we look at it, it'd be, you'd be fine to do that. So we're not going to talk about that because we feel that's already in the ordinance and we can do that. So it's more of now, where can we park? So our current code says that it must be outside of the setbacks. Can't be in the front yard setback, can't be in the side yard setback. So he's kind of got a drawing here of other locations, you know, in the front, in the front of, in the driveway, in front of the garage, on the side yard, or in the back. He's got a fourth on the street, but that's legal parking, but it doesn't count towards your, your legal parking space. So the, the idea that he's looking at is, should we change our ordinance? Because right now, it couldn't be in the front yard setback. Now, if your house is built seventy feet off a property line and your setback is twenty-five feet, then in that fifty feet between your, yeah, because that's a buildable area, that would be a legal parking space, so you could do that. But most of our houses are built right to that setback line, so we can have a bigger backyard, which most of us would prefer to have. There are a few out there that are pushed back a little bit farther. And then most side yard setbacks are eight feet. And in most cases, they try to build as big a house as they can get, and they go to that, that limit. So when you say you can't be within the side yard setback of eight feet, in order to have a parking stall, you have to have at least seventeen feet, nine for the parking stall, an eight-foot setback. Most of us do not have that and, and never had, so it needs to be in the backyard. So the thought is, should we change the language and allow it in that side yard? So that's where kind of the, I forget, it's not this, but it's the computer. So kind of the suggestion is to take the non-tandem to other required parking spaces and remove the side setback.
I think you lost the audio again.
Oh, beautiful.
They're not connected. Guess I had to get them out of there.
So this is kind of what the suggestion is, not, you know, so that just kind of have an idea as we go through this. So I wanted to give you kind of language. So about a history lesson, you know, Roy City adopted our first zoning ordinance in nineteen fifty-three. So prior to that, it was Weaver County's zoning code we'd have to go by. It was amended in seventy-three. I don't know what to do anymore. We all know it works because we heard it.
Well, in the mid-open meetings, we just have to record it electronically, correct?
Yeah, we've got electronically, so.
So we've got that covered.
The great thing is, with everything being on Zoom, I can upload the audio into the video and you won't tell. It's always fun when your mouth goes and then the words have to come. So anyway, the ordinance was amended in nineteen seventy-three, wasn't a huge thing, it was just some changes to little things. You can come up to the table.
This is funny.
Again, it was changed in two thousand four. Then somewhere along the line, someone got an, an idea, well, let's just amend the entire thing. And then two thousand five is when the major changed, you know, it was just not code changes, but it was format changes. So most, everybody's code is if you have R one eight, you go to that chapter, it gives you the list of setbacks, list of uses. And then if you want to go to the R one ten, you got to go to a different chapter. Ours is set up where it's a table of uses, so all uses of every zone is in that chapter. To me, it makes a little more sense. I can just send you there and you can look at all commercial zones, all residential zones. Chapter ten, it has all the setbacks for each zone and requirements. So that was the big shift, is taking it out of individual chapters for individual zones and combining things. So in the charts that you see on the, your illustrations, I just kind of, you know, the zones that are listed there, minimum lot area in square footage, minimum lot width, setbacks. Now, I didn't include corner lots because that opened up a whole nother ballgame, a whole nother set of problems to, to explain. So an example, on some of the older codes, you'll see eight feet min equals eighteen. Well, what that means is, one side can't be less than eight, but the two of them together have to equal eighteen. So eight and ten or nine and nine. Your choice of how you want to do it, or eight and a half and, you know, nine and a half, so. So when you go to it, so nineteen fifty-three, you can see there was only two zones for a single family. Granted, there was others, but I didn't want to start including duplexes and triplexes, so we'll, just for time's sake. So the two zones, eight thousand square foot lot minimums, sixty-five foot in width, front yard setbacks of thirty, side yards are eight and ten, rear yard thirty. I did include the setbacks for the corners, but your illustrations don't have them. So again, kind of a straightforward, so anything within that envelope is where you could build your house and your required parking. So in fifty-three, apparently not a lot of people had cars, so you had a requirement of one automobile. And then that, it didn't even, it doesn't even really say how big that is, just a standard size automobile is the size of the parking stall. So when you look at some of those older homes, those garages are tiny. Which is funny because the nineteen fifty cars were huge.
Big doors.
You know, nineteen sixty cars with the wings in the back and, you know, a trunk that could fit a mini in it just, you know, by itself. But that was the standard. So in nineteen seventy-three, they increased the number of zones, so changed them. So you get R one six, R one seven, R one eight, R one ten, R E fifteen and R E twenty. Setback wise, the R, R one eight is pretty much the R one zone. So they did have some that were less than our eight thousand square feet in a lot that were more than. Setbacks, minimum lot width, sorry, R seven, R one eight are the same as the R one. R one six was less than, so it was sixty-five feet before, now it can be sixty. Again, kind of looking at allowing for some smaller lots, smaller homes. And then, of course, you know, the bigger lots and the bigger homes that can be on there. So the, the diagram just kind of gives you the minimum. So if it's sixty foot wide, then that's how big your lot's going to be. You just, six thousand square feet divided by sixty, so it's a hundred feet. And so it kind of gives you an idea of, if you just did the minimum width, that's, you know, your, your property's going to be that long. So obviously, some of these properties like R one ten, fifteen and twenty, you get a ten-foot setback and a fourteen. Even back then, it's not big enough to have an eight-foot setback plus a nine-foot car. So historically, we've already been going down this, this road, and most cities are like that.
Well, then, in the code that you showed, the fifty-three code, it didn't prohibit parking in the setback. But in the seventy-three, then it, that was the first time I saw at least.
Well, it still need to be properly located for future garage space. So it still need to be properly located. It just didn't say not in the setback.
Gotcha.
So kind of the language again. Again, it was still in seventy-three, it was one car. But again, a lot of people, you could live off of one person's wage in, in the seventies. So a lot of people didn't really have a need for multiple cars. Two thousand four is when things kind of jumped. The, the zones remained the same. Setbacks remain the same. The minimum width of an R E twenty jumped from eighty-five to a hundred and fifteen. The setbacks were still ten and fourteen. Again, that was ten minimum, fourteen maximum on the ones, as long as they go up to twenty-four. Lot sizes changed a little bit because a hundred and fifteen feet, you didn't have to be as, as long or as deep as the one before. This one, they did require, now it's a two-car garage or two-car side-by-side parking space. Get a little bit more technical on what, where, why, how come, what has to be parked on. You'd think, you know, common sense must have just gone away at some point in time where, where before it was just inferred to and now it's got to be written out. Those, those attorneys and lawyers, right, they do it to you all the time.
No offense taken.
And planners, don't worry. And then two thousand five, which is the same code that we have today. Granted, it has been modified here and there, but the setbacks really haven't changed. R E twenty, it did change from one hundred and fifteen foot minimum to one hundred, which, you know, it's still a large lot. You know, a little less than a half acre, but you'd have a horse, two horses on that property if you wanted today. Setbacks have been pretty much consistent for R one eight and, and down. R one ten, fifteen and twenty, they've changed from that ten and fourteen to just ten and ten. So they're getting a little bigger homes with the setback on the side, it's less. Front's pretty much the same, twenty-five or thirty, and same with the rear, twenty-five or thirty. The two thousand five code, though, you'd think between twenty, oh four and oh five, it wouldn't change much. In oh four, you had what, just, this was all that talked about parking. In two thousand five, you have multiple sections of where it can be, what it needs to be on. Again, ten nineteen six, all required off-street parking spaces shall be located in the same lot. Apparently, there was a problem that I'd use somebody else's lot to park my cars on. Number two, no off-street parking should be permitted within the front yard setback or any side yard, side yard facing a street setback. So now we've eliminated corners where you can, you know, can park. Oh, and it goes on. Don't, you know, two thousand five is a little more articulate. So now we've described how big the parking stalls have to be, minimums. If it's parallel or perpendicular, however you want to describe that. And then it talks about in the table below, the differences between single-family, two-family, multifamily, and then an internal accessory dwelling unit. So all of them have the same talking, not within the front yard side setback, not within the front and side yard setback, and not within the front and side yard setback. So the concern I have is if we change the I A D U allowance to be in the side yard setback, what does that do to the other zones? Why is one zone and one use so much more, you know, a little more special than the other ones? So it's kind of a balancing act. We've got to kind of go through is, how do we treat one differently than the others? Or how can we keep them the same? So when the I A D U ordinance came about, again, it's a state mandated one that all cities had to require it. And then there were certain things we could do to require, that the state allowed us to require. You didn't have to, but some cities could, could do that. We required a, a third car parking, and then we kept it consistent with the other zones, but it just can't be in the side, the side and the front yard setback. Again, consistency. So the, going back to the mayor's visual, his thoughts, ours, you know, the discussion is the whole thing is, do we want to allow it to be in the side yard? The council's already pretty much eliminated not in the front yard. So, you know, that's off the table, it's more of the, of the side yard. So any thoughts, questions, or concerns?
What's the width of a standard parking stall?
Nine feet. And in some cases, that almost seems not enough. Depends on wide your car is, you know, if you're a Ford F three fifty. Yeah, you're squeezing in, you get through things.
Especially if you're parking two next to each other.
Yeah, but that's the standard, nine feet wide.
Nine by twenty, nine by eighteen.
Yeah, we do allow for it to go down to eighteen feet in length as long as you're next to a six-foot park or walkway or a minimum of two-foot landscaping, so your car hangs over that. Otherwise, it's twenty feet.
And obviously, I mean, going back a long time, the code's kind of never allowed a parking stall in a setback. So like, what's the, what's the genesis or origin for that? Because I don't think we get where we're at by accident. That doesn't mean we can't change the future, but I'm just trying to think through, like, what was the wisdom when that was created? What's the reason? I mean, the width of it's one thing, you know, eight feet's the setback. And if it's a nine-foot typical stall, you're already smaller than, than that.
I think most of, and it really goes back to when people were leaving cities and coming to suburbs. People, when you lived in the city, you were really close together, compact, almost on top. You kind of felt like you're on top of each other. You go to the suburbs, you get a little bit more elbow room. Houses are so far off the street or so far away, away from each other. You kind of feel, you know, you get that elbow room. Now, granted, people are moving back to cities, but, or downtowns, I should say. But the suburbs are still here, and I think that's the original intent of setbacks is to have that extra space, plus it's also a health issue. No windows, you can't have circulation. So the more windows we get, the healthier we have, we are. So I think, you know, that's kind of where the setbacks come from of eight feet. I mean, some cities are smaller than that. We do have one development, Highgate Cove, it was through a development where it's a five-foot setback.
And on the parking stalls, you said the depth is typically eighteen feet?
Twenty.
And then when we're talking setbacks, that goes from the front of the building to the curb?
Well, it's from property, so if you go.
It's usually a foot behind the sidewalk.
Yeah, if there's a four-and-a-half foot park strip and a four-foot sidewalk, the property line is one foot from the sidewalk going towards the house. So when I say twenty-five feet, we can say twenty-six feet to sidewalk.
I'm just trying to get a visual of that.
No, you're good. So if, if your house is built, like I mentioned, you know, fifty, sixty feet farther from, you know, from property line, I only count the first twenty-five feet as your front yard setback. It's not to your house, it's usually to that magical line. It's just ninety-five percent of most homes are built to that line.
And in tandem, the code defined that as one behind the other, not side by side.
Yeah, so today's code is side by side. So was it two thousand four or was it seventy-three that talked about side by side?
So you said the council basically eliminated anything in the front?
Right, because they, they eliminate, remember when we had the discussion of temporary parking in the front for winter storms when?
Right, but my thought on that is, most people park in the driveway anyway.
Okay, explanation of that.
See where I'm going.
Is their garage, and I've said this many times, and I'm guilty of it now, I yell at my wife every time. Everybody has forty dollars worth of crap in the garage and eighty grand worth of vehicles outside. But the garage is your legal parking space. Now, if you choose not to park there, it's your own.
Understood.
So in this case, if we have an I A D U with a third car required parking and it's in the backyard, and they park in the side, to me, they still have the legal parking space. Just like you're, you know, when you have kids and they start driving and they have multiple cars, we're not all going to park in the garage, we'll park on the driveway, because the driveway is an exception to the rule. As long as you're leading to legal parking, then the driveway becomes an accessory. And then the side yard next to the driveway is an accessory.
I see.
So it's not legal parking, it's just secondary or.
But that's my point, is that's where people are parking anyway.
Right.
So it makes more sense that you would allow, maybe make an allowance for the driveway space for your parking than you would on the side where you don't have room anyway.
Yeah, but here's a, like, I had the same thought, right? But now that you're adding another unit in there, so let's say you convert the garage into a living space or just a basement apartment. It doesn't pick whichever one. The tandem parking is a safety issue, because if you've got four vehicles, people need to get out, like, that's, that's a problem. But now you've added in another person or a couple or whatever moves in there, now you've got a, like, if you're in an apartment, apartment complex or a duplex, you've got to add in a half a unit for guest parking, plus the people that live there. So you've already got the two spaces that belong to the house, but now they've added somebody in, you've got to account for those new vehicles. And if it's two people that are working, you're really adding four vehicles. Or not four, but you're adding two more to there. So even if you designate those as the legal parking space, that doesn't really alter the equation or the math, does it? I'm just thinking out loud here.
I, I see what you're saying.
My, my issue is more of just keep it consistency. So a single-family or two-family dwelling requires two side-by-side parking stalls outside the setback. Now, the difference between.
Which is your garage.
I A D U and a duplex is, I'm required as a homeowner to live in the home of the I A D U. Duplex, I can own and then rent both of them out, I don't have to live there. But I'm still having the same number of cars.
Yeah.
Even if it's two, two young newlywed couples living in the house and the I A D U and the duplex, still have a number of cars. The house becomes a little more of an issue if all of a sudden, you know, Janelle has, converts her basement, she still has two kids living home in cars, they have four, plus the basement apartment has two or three. It now becomes, to me, it's just more of consistency. How do I keep it consistent?
Right.
So that I don't have that argument come, you know, well, I'm a duplex, why do I have to abide by this? And yet, that duplex doesn't. Or my triplex or fourplex or whatever has to comply with this, why don't, you know? I mean, I, we could probably wordsmith it away, it would still be legal, but is it really consistent?
Understood.
So was your thought to make those the legal parking spaces in front in the setback? Is that kind of?
You're eliminating the two in the garage, people are going to park there anyway. That was, that was my thought, but.
But like, you know, like I said earlier, if you convert your, your garage into living space, now I'd require it somewhere else on the property. And it'd be, become a nineteen fifty's home with a detached garage or detached parking space. It becomes tricky. It's just one of those, I just kind of want to get your thoughts, if there's anything, you know, you want me to bring back for another discussion, any ideas or things you want me to research? I can look at other cities, see what they're doing, what they require. But if someone's in violation of this, no one's actually going around. Well, you wouldn't be able to have an I A D U without that third car today.
You have to show.
So very few circumstances is actually going to work in single-family areas.
So right now, we have four I A D U's in the city. Two from last year, two from this year. Well, I say last year as in.
No, so if you get approval, you gotta have everything.
Do what?
So to get approval, you have to have all this stuff.
Yeah, you have to provide a site plan to show your parking and then how you're converting it.
And do those four, have they had any issue complying with the current?
No, most of them had big enough, like, one of them, I can say, they didn't have a, a garage originally. It was one of those older homes, just had a space, and then they had a detached garage in the back. So that's where their two was, and so in between the detached garage and the house, they provided that third car, car parking. So that one, you know, was a little unique, but a lot of them, yeah, it is kind of, but even then, would you take your truck down a night, a side yard of eight feet, you wouldn't be able to park there anyway.
So how many other applications we talking about, we can?
Ones that, I, I think I've had three that I've had to decline because they couldn't provide that parking space.
There's really not a lot of scenarios where I see this being applicable.
And the, the downside is, I know what the state was trying to do. Because they even went into the building code and changed some of the building code requirements. Because if you had a duplex, you got to do firewalls and separate utilities. They eliminated that under the I A D U, so it made it cheaper for people to convert. But I'm still going to charge fifteen hundred dollars for a two-bedroom basement apartment. I'm just, you know, that's what people are doing. They're not making it cheaper to rent it. that's what people are doing, they're not making it cheaper to rent it. I mean, I wouldn't, if I'm going to rent out my basement, it's going to be for as much as I can get it.
Yeah.
So I understand what they're, they're hoping that, that the savings for not converting everything would translate into your rent, but, no.
And those three that you talked about, was it that they couldn't meet the code, or is it that they just chose not to?
They, they chose not to, in most cases.
Because I'm just wondering, is it really prohibitive, is it the cost, or is it?
No, most of it again is, I just don't, I can't get to my backyard to provide that parking space because I got an eight-foot setback, or I don't want to ruin my backyard, therefore, never mind. I think that was one, and the other two are just can't fit it. Now, corner lots are always different, because I got two streets, it's easier to provide an extra access on a corner lot to provide a parking, so most of those, if anybody ever came in, would be pretty easy to convert.
That's what I'm going to say, mine is a corner lot and could easily be converted and have a third.
Yeah.
But, but then I'm thinking, so you only have to have a third, you don't have to have, like you said, if some two people moved in, technically you have two cars, but you only have to legally provide-
So again, like I mentioned, it has to be out of the side yard setback facing the street, and that's generally twenty feet, so you're going to have a twenty-foot long driveway with a twenty-foot parking space. Well, once I have that twenty-foot parking space outside the setback, then that driveway leading to it becomes an accessory parking pad, just like your garage. Then the I eighty U now because tandem parking, because we didn't require it side by side. So, I mean, there are exceptions to every rule, and that's kind of one of those, as long as you have that legal parking space, how you use that access point. And I'm, you know, you met the code, I, I'm not going to call you out on anything else.
So I guess maybe something I would like to maybe explore a little bit further is, what other cities in our area allow for parking in a setback? Both on the side and in the-
I can tell you one that does not.
Which one?
West Haven.
I know him, I know him.
He wasn't going to say that. Because I, I don't know, I mean, I'd be curious to see if others have allowed that, I mean, the, the space and things like that, I think we can see some of the-
Actually putting it up.
Constraints.
Well, I can, I can look for that, I can even look, see what other cities have the requirement for a third car. Because again, that was an option cities could choose.
Yeah, because I, I think if we're going to put those types of units in houses, I think we've got to realistically account for parking. I mean, I, I don't think you can say we're going to convert a garage or basement, and nobody's going to be adding vehicles to that.
Right.
And especially with our winter parking, which is too, like, you can't just, you're like, oh, they'll park on the street, you know, you can't do that.
Our winter ordinance is a lot better in some of the surrounding cities, whereas like October to March or whatever, it's absolutely not.
And we still catch flack because it snows and, but I mean, it's, so honestly-
It's a snow day, it's a lot easier to move your car than- I mean, I live in a city that's south of here that's absolutely not. And I have a neighbor that makes sure that nobody does.
Well, and as a renter, I would be-
I'll have to tell you the story after.
Really irritated to get somewhere and find out that I don't actually have real parking, you know.
And that was, there was a former council member that has since left, she always had that concern is, even with our downtown parking requirements that are much less than this, people are going to park and there's going to be everywhere. There was always a concern of hers of parking, parking, parking. So, I mean, it's a concern.
And the parking that we require now just has to be on some sort of improved surface, so it can be on gravel or, it just can't be on dirt. So I mean, even the, the cost of that can be pretty inexpensive, or you could spend a lot, I mean, you can, but there's options that are not expensive, I guess.
Residential is a little less stringent than commercial, or commercial, it's asphalt or concrete or gravel.
I guess with this, then, it's, we can just say it's kind of fine as it is, right?
Well, let me look and we'll see what other cities allow or don't allow, and that way you can have-
I'm saying, like, if, you know, because you said, how many people did you turn away, and said three, and they're like, hmm, okay, you know, well, we tried, or, and no one has said like, oh, this is going to cost an arm or a leg, or, yeah, I like my backyard more than I like a little bit of extra income. And to me, that's kind of like, okay, I think we're doing the right thing by saying, okay, you got to have this extra parking, maybe you need to put a little more thought into what else you want to do. And I think that keeps it there, and then the people that weren't able to do it, still accommodates them too. You know, instead of like changing all this stuff just for maybe a handful of folks that, that want to do it. Because I think we put a lot of thought and effort into it, nobody wants to be parking in the front, cover the safety issues, you know, setbacks, non-tandem parking. And, you know, when somebody rents something, they want an extra parking spot instead of just saying, oh, sure, here's the place, but I don't know where you're going to park, you know. But I think this kind of almost meets all the criteria and all the widgets that we want to check off when somebody would want to come in and move into the city. And I think this is also kind of like a safeguard against that, and those, so those people that just want to get in there, you know, like you said, get the max rent and just, you know, become their own little slumlord, kind of that feeling, not care about the rent. And I think this is, I think it's kind of good where we have it.
One of those three applicants that you had, how many of those three was it even possible? After they reviewed the requirements, I can't even make this work.
Of the three, two of them were, it was just not going to be possible to get back there because they had eight foot.
Right.
One was more, I just didn't want to, don't want to ruin my backyard.
So one person that actually could make it work if they wanted to. Back to your point, is, well, let's leave it there, if it's even possible for them to do it, it sounds like in most situations, it's really not.
When we originally went through this, we knew there were going to be some that are just not going to be able to have it. The state, when they said that everybody has to have that, it had to be a lot, I think it was eight thousand square foot, I could be wrong. There was a, a minimum size, the state said, you, cities can cut it off at that. We just went all zones, because there are some, you know, R one six that are ten thousand, twelve thousand square foot lot, so they might be able to do that, so, but we knew going in, not everybody's going to be able to do this for some, some reasons. And I think that's kind of one of the, the things the mayor's looking at is, can we change it to accommodate for some of those, those cases? But let's, let me look and see what other cities have. You know, if they have that requirement for the extra parking space, if they do, where can it be? And I can bring that language back, that way you kind of see what other people are doing.
Yeah, but I'd, I'd really like to see if others allow parking those eight-foot setbacks, or even in the, kind of pigging off of- Commissioner Fel, you know, the front, front setback, if they were to convert the garage.
Well, yeah, a lot of cars just won't fit it.
I mean, you've narrowed it down to R one fifteen, RE fifteen and RE twenty, because they're the only ones that have a setback even wide enough to get to the backyard.
Yeah, but again, some of those older homes may have-
Not have built all the way to the setback, fair enough.
Well, and some of the cities they're zoning allow for larger setbacks.
Yes.
And so, so if they, if they permit it, it's because of the larger setback.
I'll look at the language, I'll look at the setbacks, and when I bring it, they'll, that's that way you can kind of compare apples to apples rather than apples to oranges.
This is a really good example of the, like, the decisions we make twenty, thirty years ago.
Can have effect, you know?
Yeah, so in twenty, thirty years from us, like, what's that going to affect, you know, so to think about those things.
Well, Steve would be the place for AI.
I think it's also a classic example of-
Play online.
When you try to create new policy that's meant to affect something, which is a good thing, but then you're trying to apply it to things that are already existing, it's, it's not always an easy-
I mean, if we had a lot of space to build newer homes, because I, we have one that was built brand-new with an I eighty U already in mind, so they planned for it. Was able, you know, very easily to put a third car parking space, they just didn't build it all the way out, and, you know, said, okay, here it goes. So, you know, some, that makes it easier, so some of these cities like Hooper, West Haven, when they build a new home, they can accommodate that. For us, older cities like Roy, Ogden, Riverdale, it comes really hard.
Yeah, and I think you end up, like, my sister, she lives down in Harriman, and, you know, you get the older parts of the city and the newer ones, but just even driving through South Jordan, West Jordan, I mean, they're just like packed in like sardines. It's already starting to almost look like the East Coast where everybody's just on street parking, I mean, it's even in the neighborhoods, because there, there's, there's no parking anywhere because everything is so tight with everything.
Interesting to see what the terrace looks like. Like, the terrace has a lot of the older developments, closer developments, so.
And our minimum setback on the side is eight, correct?
Yes.
You mentioned that there was one that was five, and that's a-
There was the Highgate Cove, but that was through a development agreement. I think to accommodate, because he originally wanted townhomes, the neighborhood in the south, we all know, you know, kind of had some concerns, so by putting single-family homes, he needed a few more homes than what were normally allowed, so they went with smaller lots, smaller setbacks. When you drive through it, yeah, it looks a little closer, but, I mean, those ones will never have I eighty U's.
Never that close to something.
Yeah.
But you see it all over, actually.
Yeah.
Well, even the newer ones in my neighborhood are closer together than, like you said, they build as big as they can on the smaller lots.
All these PRUDs, that's the point, is to maximize our buildability here.
Solid gut, so I got some homework, and I'll bring that to the next one.
Any commissioner thoughts or updates, questions from us?
I like the approach that we're not changing in large amounts anything going on. And we had, how many, five total people have come?
Seven.
Seven?
Seven total, yeah. Nobody had a fit when they were told no, or they couldn't work it out, nobody said it's not bad.
They were kind of, ah darn, you know, you know, it wasn't an argument of any sort, it was just, I wish I could-
Any lawsuits?
No.
Then move on.
It's spoken like a true lawyer.
Next case.
This is two years old, this was two years ago.
Everything's just not going to fit every.
No, and that's, that's the disadvantage of some of these older cities that were built forties, fifties and sixties that-
I know that one too, my daughters were built with this in mind.
Lot, lot smaller, where other cities like West Haven and Hooper have a lot of land that they can still build on.
For now.
Yeah, today.
Well, do you have anything for Steve?
Next time, well, I should say, our first meeting in March is pretty full. We've got three or four site plans, and one general plan amendment and rezone request.
Is that the twelfth?
Yeah, and then-
I love these rezones.
Do what?
I love the rezone requests, so.
I think this one, this one kind of makes some sense. I think we should have included the property, but we didn't, but, anyway. And then next work session, we'll, I'll bring this in, and then we want to start talking, if you remember the general plan, it talked about a commercial mixed-use zone on the west side, where right now it's all community commercial. So we're going to start talking about that and what we want to allow and how we want to allow it. It'll still, will probably be part of chapter thirteen, which is our mixed-use. Just kind of want to see, you know, how, how different it's going to be from downtown, so we'll start that discussion. And then the other one is, the other mandate is still going to do, which is the compatible use overlay zone for all airports. So for the airport, the Ogden Airport, we've got to do a compatible use overlay in an area that's already built, so.
Oh, I did forget to say one thing that you guys-
Sorry, we moved on.
That you guys might be interested in, if you didn't already notice, is that I believe tomorrow, West Haven has their planning commissioner meeting, and the Walmart is actually up, so you might want to check.
Is actually up?
Well, because you know how Walmart's owned that lands forever?
Don't, don't believe anything.
I know, but I'm just, I saw the, I saw the drawings.
They have approached the city like four times since they bought the property.
Yes, oh, I know, we'll see what happens, but I'm just saying, something to watch from our side, because they're on the other side of our-
We're not getting excited yet, other than a few people, so we're not getting excited.
So you'll tell us when to get excited?
And for those of you who haven't met Brody, this is Brody Bailey, he's our newest planning commissioner, he's the alternate, the other alternate for when Claude has stepped down, so.
And what we're talking about tonight will be Brody's problem in the future, not us.
I will tell you this, when you see them pushing dirt, get excited.
Okay.
That's the only time it's real, is when they're pushing dirt.
Depending where you live in Roy, the Clinton one still maybe is closer, so.
Yep.
True. Right, exactly right.
Okay, well, with that, I think our final motion's in order, and you look like you're ready to make it.
I am, motion was dirty.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Five seconds.
Any opposed? Okay, you got to stay here. Turn the light out when you're done.
How did we know that?
Steve's got to tell me the story.
Let me turn everything off.